Welcome, everyone here and at home to the May 9th Eugene City Council meeting. The first item of this evening is a resolution, Resolution 5033. We wanted to do this resolution in appreciation to the communities, agencies, and businesses that helped the city of Eugene with events honoring fallen Eugene police officer Chris Kilcullen. I'm going to read the resolution because there's actually no point in having one if you don't read it. The City Council of the city of Eugene finds that on April 22nd, 2011, Eugene police officer Chris Kilcullen tragically lost his life in the line of duty. Many communities, agencies, and businesses contributed resources to the city of Eugene to assist in paying tribute to Officer Kilcullen. The city of Eugene wishes to express its gratitude for those contributions. The Oregon State Fire Marshal provided an expert incident management team comprised of members from the fire service agencies throughout the state for comprehensive planning and operation support of the motorcade procession and celebration of life event. The University of Oregon provided use of the Matthew Night Arena and personnel for planning and implementation of the celebration of life event and motorcade procession, including event production and parking services. The Lane Transit District, Eugene Water and Electric Board, Oregon Pacific Red Cross, City of Springfield, Lane County, Oregon Department of Transportation, Oregon State Police, Lane County Sheriff, and federal law enforcement agencies all helped plan a celebration of life event and motorcade procession and supplied resources for implementing the events, including free shuttle service provided by Lane Transit District. Police agencies from Lane County, Springfield, Portland, Cottage Grove, Florence, Junction City, Salem, and the Oregon State Police volunteered police personnel to keep the city safe and provide services during the celebration of life event and motorcade procession so that Eugene police personnel could fully participate in the events. More than 200 Honor Guard members participated in the Honor Guard at the celebration of life. Local businesses donated materials and services for the celebration of life planning efforts and events. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Eugene, a municipal corporation of the state of Oregon as follows. Section 1. The city of Eugene extends its gratitude and appreciation to the Oregon State Fire Marshal, the University of Oregon, Lane Transit District, Eugene Water and Electric Board, City of Springfield, Lane County, Oregon Department of Transportation, the Red Cross, and participating law enforcement agencies for contributing thousands of hours assisting the city of Eugene plan, celebration of life event, and motorcade procession, donating the use of Matthew Night Arena and providing staff to carry out the events. Section 2. The city of Eugene extends its gratitude and appreciation to participating law enforcement agencies for donating law enforcement personnel to patrol Eugene and respond to calls so that Eugene police personnel could attend the events honoring Officer Kilcullen and also to the agencies who participated in the Honor Guard. Section 3. The city of Eugene extends its gratitude and appreciation to intergovernmental partners and businesses for contributing time, money, and resources to assist the city in paying tribute to Officer Kilcullen. The foregoing resolution will be adopted this day, the 9th of May, 2011. Thank you all very, very much.[261.02][261.02](APPLAUSE). So you want to put the motion on the table?
I move to adopt Resolution 5033, pronouncing appreciation to the communities, agencies, and businesses that assisted the city of Eugene with events honoring fallen Eugene police officer Chris Kilcullen.
Second. Moved and seconded in. Would you please vote? Aide in favor and not in opposition, it passes with gratitude from us all. Any comments from councilors? All right, seeing that, really, we do very much say thank you to everyone for their help and assistance. We'll move on to the regular part of our agenda tonight. First thing is a public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for individuals to speak to the city council on any city-related issues except for those items which have already been heard by hearings official or are on tonight's agenda as a public hearing. Each person will have three minutes to speak. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward if known. The timer and lights indicate the time you have to speak. A yellow light will come on when you have 15 seconds to complete your comments. The red light indicates the end of the three minutes. We have 10 people signed up for the public forum this evening. First up is Bob Richards, followed by Mark Brewer.
Mayor Pierce, the ECT councilors, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Bob Richards, Executive Director of the Wollimate Family, and I am here to speak on funding for the sobering services at Buckley Center, which is the Wollimate Family program. I live in the city of Eugene. As many of you will remember, funding for Buckley Center sobering station and two detoxification beds was cut from the Lane County budget three years ago. Two years ago, Lady, Lane County and the city of Eugene completed a revenue swap, and we very much appreciate that because it helped us to continue operation for two more years. Last year, that expired, and this Lane County found a way of funding that for one additional year, but that's going to expire at the end of June of this year. At that time, those services will no longer be funded. We're very aware of the financial crunch that every jurisdiction across the United States is facing. Everyone has really tough budgets and is having to make some really tough decisions. We're also aware, however, of how incredibly critical our services are to local law enforcement. The jail, hospitals, and other social service agencies and the public at large really depend on these services. There are now two cahoots vans operating in Eugene. Without our sobering station, those vans and law enforcement across Lane County will have nowhere to take intoxicated individuals. They'll be left to either leave them on the streets, take them to the ER, flooding the ER rooms, and also those huge costs will be passed on to the public at large. The jail won't have any space. They won't have any place to take them. As when I spoke to the Board of Commissioners for Lane County, I told them this is a train wreck that we've been worrying about for quite some time, and it's getting a lot nearer as the 1st of July approaches. There's no doubt in my mind that were those services have to be shut down, the impact on this community would be very apparent and very quickly. I suspect you can talk to our Chief of Police, and he could tell you exactly what would happen. So I therefore urge you to communicate with the Lane County Board of Commissioners and problem solve with them, and hopefully, like you did brilliantly three years ago, you can find a solution to restore the funding so we can continue to offer these services to the city of Eugene and the other local jurisdictions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mark Brewer is up next, followed by Eli Volam.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Mark Brewer. I live in Eugene. I'm a project manager with Essex General Construction. I'm here this evening to speak on behalf of the Paradigm on Pearl MPT application, but I'm also here for a selfish reason. I want to keep my job. I think I can speak for the hundreds of others who might work on this project wanting employment as well. The Stimulus Act of 2010 recognized that one of the best ways to create jobs was through construction spending. It was a time when the private sector hesitated and struggled to invest in new construction, and one of the biggest economic engines had run out of gas. Nonetheless, despite the trend, despite the ever-increasing hesitation of lenders to finance projects, despite cash-strapped municipalities surcharging and adding fees to the precious few projects, some private projects managed to come to fruition. One of the mechanisms that helped to make these projects shovel-ready was the multiple-unit property tax exemption. With your approval, the MPT will make this extraordinary project viable and will result in both immediate and long-term results for the community. We are a local contractor, hiring local subcontractors and vendors. Most of the money spent in this project will stay local and rip through our local economy. Roughly 45 percent of every construction dollar goes to wages somewhere along the line. On the paradigm, that could be more than $4 million. This project will directly and indirectly employ hundreds of workers for as much as 12 hours per day to meet a very, very aggressive schedule. The impact will be real and immediate. With your help, many people will continue to receive paychecks and not unemployment checks. Yet this project isn't exclusively jobs. It's also about pride, pride in our work, building a signature structure in keeping with Eugene's values, and the developers' pride, investors from our own community who understand and contribute their money to support green and sustainable buildings in Eugene, creating structures to enhance the built environment and model the goals of our community. This project is both ambitious and exciting. It will provide parking, mixed-use space, housing, and sustainable features that we can all be proud of. Your support by granting the MPT for this project is a vote to support jobs, green construction, and appropriate development for Eugene. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Eli Volam, followed by Dan Neal.
Good evening. My name's Eli Volam, Eugene resident, Ward 1. Here to comment about the Paradigm on Pearl project as well, but solely here to talk about the LEED certification. I work for a company called Earth Advantage, based out of here in Eugene, and we provide third-party certifications for LEED for homes, Earth Advantage, Energy Star projects. We were here, I think, February 2010, talking about the Danville project, now called the West Gate, and this project is awesome. A quick update is that was registered under the LEED for Homes Midrise Pilot, and it's on track to be the first mid-rise building in the Northwest. So that is just awesome. Kudos to the project team. Happy to report back that it's this exact same team that is working on this new building, and it's critical. I work from Roseburg up to Albany, the small guy working on the back of his truck up to large multifamily projects, and I see all sorts of stuff, and it all comes down to planning. And all the planning for this project has been looked at through the lens of achieving LEED certification. One thing that came up is LEED for Homes Midrise Pilot turned into the actual LEED for Homes program, and it added a level of rigor. So the Paradigm on Pearl project is being held to a higher bar. Currently, they've had the opportunity to evaluate a lot of different green rating systems, and they didn't have to go LEED for Homes Midrise, but it actually is the appropriate system despite some levels of added rigor. This project is going to be following a good green rating system that's really providing a recipe for a high-quality building that focuses on efficiency, durability, indoor air quality, and public spaces. You know, one of our goals is, you know, reducing sprawl and focusing on positive development, and really, multifamily housing is an important part of that. Earth Advantage had the opportunity to work on a lifecycle assessment study with the Oregon DEQ last year, and two of the biggest lifecycle impact features that came out of it were multifamily housing and energy efficiency. Now, without the MPT, this project might somehow find a way forward, likely not, but I can guarantee they're going to start value engineering. The first things to go are the energy efficiency, the indoor air quality, you know, kind of backs it back to code. And, you know, what is code? We like to say it's the worst building you're allowed to build without going to jail, right? But we have some good codes, but, you know, we can do better than that. So at this point, we're targeting a gold rating, just like the Danville was, and the Danville is actually looking much closer to platinum at this point. It's possible, it's achievable to hit that, and so we're certainly looking at gold for this one too, which is a great thing. Platinum's always in the sights. At this point, the building's looking to be about 26 percent more efficient than if it was just built to code, and it's really another way to put a landmark building in our community that really helps us measure our goals. You know, it's a measured building, verified, I'm sorry, verified.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan Neal is next, followed by Zachary Vishinoff.
Dan Neal, Ward 2. Tonight, I'm here to request your support for a very unique MPT project, the Paradigm on Pearl, located on the corner of 17th and Pearl, kitty corner from Hiron's. This project was designed from the ground up to embody our community's goals for compact urban growth and sustainable development. This is a mixed-use project with ground-floor retail. This is a project suitable for families, professionals, students, and anyone who wants to have a quality living environment near our urban core. This project has strong architectural values. After our design team met these milestones, we asked ourselves, how could we do something even more worthy of city support? How could we add to our city's growing legacy as a progressive leader in sustainability? Two things came to mind, both very costly. One, we could try to attain LEED certification at the gold or platinum level, something done very rarely, even at a national level for mid-rise projects. Two, we could provide a large underground parking facility, which, as it turns out, according to our best information, will be the largest such private facility in the city of Eugene. By including these worthy features in our project, we have earned 440 MPT points, an unprecedented total, roughly triple the all-time previous high. We cannot do these things without support from the city in the form of MPT. Without such support, we will need to build a very different project, certainly without LEED or underground parking. Unlike most MPT projects, this project will raise taxes immediately by 58 percent, according to the city manager, and the reason is that taxes will be assessed on the commercial portion of this project, something required by code, but an immediate rise in taxes is something one does not see in MPT projects. But beyond the points, the parking and the LEED certification, this project includes a host of features that we think will help transform the character of this area into a more vibrant place. We believe it will strengthen the Midtown Pearl area and improve the connection between Midtown and Downtown. The Paradigm has many features and amenities friendly to the environment and appreciated by residents and neighbors alike, such as an open courtyard, a large south-facing rooftop deck for the residents, and a community gathering place at street level on 17th Avenue. This project is strongly supported by the Neighborhood Association, labor, business, and the green community. We believe it is worthy of your support as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Zachary Vishinoff is next, followed by Gary Helt.
Zachary Vishinoff, Ward 3. Hello, everyone. You know the rule about how if something sounds way too good to be true, usually is? Well, that's what we got going with this MPT thing. 10-year tax break for anybody willing to densify the densest neighborhood in town. The neighborhood that has the, I wouldn't call them riots, I would call them micro riots, but they're still costly. And if people punch each other during the riots, they're very divisive afterwards because it's a blame game. I've got to put the MPT aside for a second, but I do, because I do want to bring up one other thing. This procession that happened, I think, was valid. The Eugene Champions Parade, I don't think was a sustainable event. There was some talk of making that a yearly event. I think if you put those two events up, you can see one was justified and one might have been, I would just say, skip the Champions Parades for extraordinary circumstances. So, back to the MPT. I got interested in this about a week and a half ago because I saw a bunch of students wandering around the alley where this impact site is. These were students who'd had a year lease that was broken. Some of them got a little extra cash out of the deal, some didn't. They looked confused. And that was about a week and a half ago, and I just thought, you know, this is a news story. Where are the reporters in this town? This is, and I really got irritated. Now, I didn't want to be invasive with these students and say, you know, what's your contact information in case I find a good reporter willing to tell your story? But I was tempted, and I regret it now because I've had reporters asking me about this. This 10-year tax break is part of tearing the neighborhood apart. You can do infill, I think infill's okay, or you can do instead-of fill. You're doing instead-of fill when you remove the area. Now, this area right now has already been impacted. I actually think this developer's a good developer, and so I think he's got some good projects in the neighborhood. He can show you already. This one, I think, went off the tracks because the impact is already there. This tax break, I don't think is justified because look at this transportation backlog you've got, what, 200 million and growing? And look at these BRT wars. I mean, smart growth is very divisive. I think you need to take the MPT and set it aside for a minute and have a deeper conversation about impacting the West University neighborhoods and others. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Gary Helt is up next, followed by Kevin Matthews.
My name's Gary Helt. I live in Eugene. I'm here because I'm frustrated. I'm here because there's an administrative order that was signed May 2nd, and I'm concerned that the process of rate-making has become little more than an under-the-radar rubber-stamp situation, in this case, raising almost $1.4 million into a $15 million stormwater program run by Public Works Administration. This is already one of the most expensive stormwater programs per capita in the state. The last increase was just two years ago. Consumer Price Index has been around 2.5 percent a year. This is a proposed increase of 11 percent. If you folks choose not to review it, it goes into effect on the 13th of this month. The PW Department has roughly estimated a need for $1 million to deal with some new drywall decommissioning rules. Never mind that actual decommissioning, construction work will fall to the property owner. The department still wants $1 million from those very property owners for any administrative work with which they may be tasked. Has anyone seen a detailed breakdown of the actual need for the million dollars? Is it realistic, if it exists? Are you aware that there's $2.6 million surplus in the program right now, this year? I don't say this lightly, but as a professional engineer who's had to deal with the technical side of this program for years, my opinion is that this is one of the worst municipal programs I've encountered in terms of expense versus meaningful results. Staff is engaged in a number of regulatory and administrative tasks which at best have no meaningful results in terms of improving water quality and at worst are actually counterproductive. Staff could at no cost be redirected to do decommissioning tasks that come up. A key assumption that the department uses that allows a tremendous amount of revenue to be collected from the commercial sector is an assumption that's just flat wrong. It involves a question of whether or not runoff from roofs is actually problematic in terms of pollution. It's quite easy to just collect samples, send them to a lab, compare the results to DEQ or EPA benchmarks, water quality benchmarks, and decide if you've got an issue or not. EWeb sponsored a program where over 500 samples were taken and tested. Turns out that the old rain barrel actually has some pretty high-quality water that's at least as good as the Mackenzie and is way below any pollution benchmarks. But the PW has been completely uncooperative in having anything to do with actual roof runoff testing. So the bottom line is that the PW has been collecting millions of dollars to manage undefined and, as it turns out, imaginary levels of pollution and downspout water for years. The biggest payer of stormwater fees is 4J School District, has a lot of roof area, about half of its total impervious area is roof. Hence, of the almost $3 million that's been assessed since the beginning of this program, one could argue that there's no justification for about $1.3 million that's been collected. So now to add insult to injury, there's another 11 percent increase.
Thank you. Kevin Matthews is next, followed by Tom McKee.
I'm Kevin Matthews, President of Friends of Eugene. We need dense, high-quality, mixed-use redevelopment in our core commercial areas. It's a pillar of InVision Eugene. It's crucial to reducing our community carbon footprint. It's crucial to our long-term economic prosperity as a community. It's crucial to our climate resiliency. Density with quality. One of the reasons that I think there's resistance to density in our community is we have not had a good record of achieving density with quality. If you build density without quality, there's a good chance you're building slums. Slums now, slums of the future. Has to be density with quality. To raise our game in density, we have to raise our game in quality. This brings me to the Paradigm on Pearl. I would love to be able to support this building. As the editor of a National Architecture Magazine, I look at LEED-certified projects around the country and around the world. I see mid-rise buildings, lower and taller buildings. What I see here is a building, with all due respect to the people who, however they got boxed into this outcome, this building is grotesque. It's 45 feet longer than the longest multifamily building allowed in our code. Probably shouldn't even have the exemption to be built. You should look at a plan of this building, not, the rendering is beautiful. As somebody who writes and sells architectural rendering software, I'm not too easily gullied by renderings. Look at the floor plan. This is a U-shaped building with a double-loaded corridor all the way around, so nearly half the units face on an inner courtyard, which is 30 feet wide and 40 feet deep. Dimensions are approximate, I've only had access to a few drawings that aren't fully dimensioned. 30 feet wide, double-loaded corridor, meaning the only windows that close to half the units have is facing inward on a courtyard that's something like 150 feet deep, 45 feet deep, 30 feet wide. It's, a real urban city would make this building be an L, not a U. Whereas we densify, we need to preserve open space in our blocks. We need to actually get to another level of planning so that we have the codes that let us build density, that let us build urban patterns that achieve the densities of European cities, and they're less dense, not central parts, and achieve the quality that goes along with this. Before you give this building an incentive, understand the building. It really is a mistake as it stands now. Thank you.
Tom McKee is next, followed by Paul Sizico.
Good evening. My name's Tom McKee. I live at, I believe, 925 North Park Avenue. I just moved here 10 days ago. While I'm a native Oregonian, I, this is the first time I've lived in Eugene. And I moved here to take on the position as Director of Buckley Detox and Sobering Center. And I know Bob spoke earlier, and I just wanted to give you some numbers. And I understand that over 4,000 folks are admitted to the sobering services a year. I just got the stats for April of this year, and 492 were admitted into the sobering station in April. Of those, 457 were from Eugene. And the Eugene Police Department transported 22 there. Cahoots transported 135 of those. And only 18 were not admitted, five because they didn't meet criteria for admission, 12 were too ill to be admitted and were referred to medical services. And one was diabetic, and we're not equipped to deal with intoxicated folks that are severely diabetic. And then I wanted to call your attention to the fact that no funding is included in Lane County's budget, preliminary budget this year for these services. There has been an option that they've set aside that they'll look at and are going to look at, but it's, I think it's real critical to the city of Eugene and the county and the residents that we have these services in place. There's a real need. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Sizico is next, followed by Alan Hancock.
Hi, I'm Paul Sizico. I'm a member of the Community Group Connecting Eugene. I'm a graduate student in biology, and I live in Ward 7. So I'm here to talk about some great news for the students and the faculty of the University of Oregon. As you probably heard last week, President Laurier Vier announced that he was working with the developer of the Oregon Research Institute building to explore the feasibility with the developer of the Oregon Research Institute building to explore the feasibility of building that building at 1700 Mill Race Drive, which is a parcel in the Riverfront Research Park between existing buildings. This, as far as I know, and according to all the students and faculty that I've worked with over the past year and a half, is really, really great news. I've worked closely with the ASUO, the Student Senate, the University Senate, various faculty members, and tons and tons of students who are really frustrated over this past year and a half that our world-class institution, the University of Oregon, was attempting to work under a 20-year-old plan of development for our riverfront and on a really wonderfully scenic river in the heart of Eugene. And to show how much the students really care about this, the students have recently authorized $56,000, excuse me, $56,000 of student funds to investigate how we can best move forward with this riverfront in the future. So, that's going to be used for educational opportunities and classes and studying what's really the best practice for working and developing this riverfront, or not developing it, making it fit the community, and meeting ecological standards in the future. So, this is really, this possibility of building the ORI building at 1700 Mill Race is fully supported by the students, I can say that, and by most of the faculty or all the faculty that I'm aware of. So, really, I'm just here to ask your support for pushing 1700 Mill Race forward. As with any project, there will be small administrative hurdles, and anything that you guys can do to make that happen would be really awesome. Would really, really make the students happy and the faculty happy. And as we move forward with redeveloping the E-Web parcel, leaving the riverfront open, and not developing it under this 22-year-old plan, would really allow us to see how that parcel, how the riverfront, could fit in to really revitalizing the downtown riverfront and E-Web. So, all I have to say is that Connecting Eugene supports 1700 Mill Race option. It's really fabulous that we're moving in this direction. Students and faculty will support this, and we need your support to materialize this kind of transformational period in the downtown riverfront of Eugene. So, thank you.
Thank you. Alan Hancock is next, followed by Rodney Retsman.
My name is Alan Hancock, and what we're passing out here is a photograph of a site at 1700 Mill Race Drive. As Paul Zico mentioned, this is really great news. This is an opportunity for a win-win situation. You'll see that in that photo there. That is in the Riverfront Research Park. The building in the background is the first of two buildings that have been built by the university for the Riverfront Research Park and a building in which the Oregon Research Institute now rents one floor of. We are supportive, we, meaning Connecting Eugene, are supportive of having ORA and the University of Oregon and the developer, Trammell Crow, build on this vacant site right next door to where they currently are. Now, this is a win-win situation because ORA gets their building. We want that to happen. Construction jobs will be created, and we'll be able to protect the riverfront for future options. And for the first time in more than two decades, citizens and students and faculty will have an opportunity to say, what's going to happen to the future of this public land that's been held in trust for the citizens of Eugene? Any development that happens in the research park, regardless of where it's located, faces some possible hurdles because we're talking about a plan that was approved when President Reagan was in office. This is a really old plan, and there could be some snags. And so, we want to encourage that the city's staff and the city council and mayor work together with the university and with the developer and ORI to figure out what hurdles, if any, there might be in this location and to overcome them. Because if there's a will, there's a way. It can happen. And we think that this is an opportunity for our community to celebrate actually coming to a solution that works well for everyone so that we can move on to other issues that are of importance to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Final one up tonight is Rodney Retsman.
Ladies and gentlemen, I hope that ladies and gentlemen...
Go up to the mic, please. Give your name, please.
Rodney Retsman, Rodney Lee Retsman. I was born in 1963 here in Eugene, Sacred Heart Hospital. Okay, I've seen a lot of things happen in this neighborhood. Neighborhood's about Eugene. Neighborhood's across the bridge. Want to praise the police. I pray for them every night. But there's something very disgusting, very wrong going on. We have children who are left behind every day in our local schools. I know two of them personally, very personally. One of them's my girlfriend, my new, I hope, future wife. She's maler-retarded. She was left behind in local high schools. She was passed on at 21 years old. I want to know what the deal is. She can't hardly read because they call her names. When she asks for help, they ignore her. She's been asking and begging for therapeutic help within her communities. She's spent time in institutions. It's all wrong. She's been locked up, bound down, because she gets a little manic sometimes, and nobody knows how to control her. I can do that. I'm homeless now. I've been homeless for two weeks, maybe three, I don't know. I spend the night on the streets where my girlfriends, or wherever. But I'm really disgusted with the way we let our nation and our city go. You know, we talk about higher taxes. We talk about ripple downs to the community, but I don't hear any echoes about where these ripple downs are coming from. I don't hear any percentages about what the wages are going to. I hear high percentages, but no percentage of how they're broke down. Bass talkers. Smooth as butter. These guys put it on a pancake. I called the question, why can't someone just once in a while walk up to a homeless person and say hello instead of casting their eyes away?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to close the public forum this evening, and thank everyone who came to speak to us about a number of important topics and a number of places where people are in need. And I'm going to call on Council Clark first.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate everybody who came to speak tonight. I don't know that I have a quick idea or a solution for Buckley House's funding issues, but I sure would like to investigate what might be possible. I know we're coming up on our budgeting process this week, and I'm sure it'll be a part of the discussion. I don't have anything I could offer to tell you right away, but I certainly will keep that in mind myself. Mr. Manager, a gentleman spoke about the stormwater fees and talked about them going into effect without our review. Can you tell me what would be involved in the process of our having some manner of review?
I don't know. What I heard the individual say is that they were going to go into effect, I think it sounded like the end of this week. So, we can certainly figure it out and get back to you at your meeting on Wednesday. So, if there is something that you need to do in order to review it, we can let you know then.
I guess my question would be too, if that's a formal process, it requires a motion. I'd like to know that in advance of the Wednesday meeting as well so that the appropriate thing could be prepared, or whether it's something that we can just have as a discussion. Either way, I appreciate knowing.
We'll get something via email to the council tomorrow.
Thank you very much.
Councilor Taylor.
Thank you, and thanks to all of you who spoke. And I will have something to say about the MUPD later, but I just want to congratulate the people who have helped to facilitate the relocation of the Oregon Research Institute. I know you've been working on it for a long time, and that is good news. Thank you.
Councilor Zelenka.
Yeah, Paul and Alan, thanks for your hard work. Good job. I'm curious to see what happens with the analysis on 1700 Mill Race as well, and hopefully we can get a better plan in the near future and stick with it. Mr. McKee, welcome to Eugene. You have a tough job in front of you. Good luck, and I, for one, am supportive of the work that you guys do at the Buckley House, and let me know if you need anything.
Councilor Polling.
Well, I too welcome Mr. McKee to our neighborhood. I agree with Councilor Zelenka. You do have your work cut out for you. You've got your hands full. Just a little bit about myself. Worked for the sheriff's office here for 25 years. I had occasion to take people there many, many times over those years, and every penny that goes into it is worth it. The amount of time saved by the officers, the amount of jail space saved, the amount of good that you do for the people that are admitted there, you can't even put a dollar amount on that. So, I too am very supportive of your organization, and like I said, every bit of money that goes into that facility is well worth the money spent, and I hope we can do the most we can to help them out to continue their service to our community.
Councilor Farr.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank Paul and Alan. Very well presented, very well thought out, and you gave some information that I hadn't heard before. So, very well done. Thank you. And to Gary, Zach, Dan, and Eli, I have personal experience with Essex Construction when I was with Foodplain County. You guys, your company, had built the Foodplain County Building. I think it was before LEED certification was even around. It's a beautiful building that would probably qualify in many areas. So, good luck and congratulations.
All right. I think we're ready to move on again. Thank you all who came to speak to us tonight. Yes?
How do you hit the phone button as usual?
Oh, Councilor Ortiz.
Thank you. I was wondering why I wasn't getting called, and this little green button was light and bright. So, I want to thank everybody for coming out. Good to see you, Bob, and good to see you again, sir. So, I just kind of want to make a couple of comments on the MUPD application. I talked to my monthly meeting this week, today, with John, and I'm, you know, getting to the point where I think we have more than our share of MUPDs in the university area. I think that MUPDs should be used for areas that we want to see increased buildings, but I don't believe in changing the rules as people are playing the game. So, I just kind of want to give folks notice that I'm probably, I'm going to be asking for a work session on the MUPDs because I kind of feel like it's time that we revisit them again. There's new people on the council. Sarah had mentioned that there's something changing at the end of this fiscal, at the end of 2011 with the state that's going to be realigning the MUPDs and how that looks if we're still, if they're still even going to have the programs. And so, I'm just giving folks kind of where I'm coming from. I will support this MUPD today, but from here on out, unless they're on the west part of town where I want to see business growth, people investing in my side of town, I probably won't be supporting them any longer.
So, now we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda, and that's a consent calendar, and you want to make the motion, please?
I move to approve the items on the consent calendar.
Second.
Moved and seconded. See anybody in the queue? So, please vote. Eight in favor and none in opposition. It passes. Thank you. The next is our action item of the evening. That's the adoption of resolution 5032. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. You were being asked to consider approval of a multiple-unit property tax exemption for Pearl Street Sustainable Housing LLC's project located at 17th and Pearl. As you recall from prior discussions, the council approved a point system for measuring public benefit and directed staff to recommend projects that receive over 100 points. This project scored well over the minimum threshold.
Okay. Thank you. Why don't you put the motion on the table, and we'll have a discussion.
Okay. I move to adopt resolution 5032, approving a multiple-unit property tax exemption for residential property located at 1647 through 1689 Pearl Street and 231 through 235 East 17th Avenue, Eugene, Oregon, Pearl Street Sustainable Housing LLC applicant.
Moved and seconded. Okay. Opening it up for discussion, I have Councilor Clark.
I agree with Kevin Matthews. Do you get that, Ed? The more work that we do around density, the higher quality becomes an issue and an important part of the process. I go reluctantly down the road of building more densely for issues of quality of life, and I hate the very idea that what we, one of the unintended consequences of too much density can be to build, end up with what could be tenements or slums. And I like the idea of making sure and incentivizing that when we are building densely, we do it in a way that creates the greatest quality possible. And I think that this project, by definition, having tripled the number of points that we use as a measure of this sort of thing and an all-time high qualifies as building quality, and so I'll support it.
Councilor Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a couple of questions for staff. So, I'm looking on page 126 of the financial analysis with the MUPD, and in the column that says Year 1, if you go down, you see a figure of $135,000, $935,000. That's taxes, property tax saved by the MUPD. Is that correct for the first year?
And a noble, from our staff, answer your questions.
That is what that represents, yes.
And how much would be paid on the commercial part? That's not in any of these figures that I can see.
I believe the developer estimated that at $20,000.
That's going to be with or without MUPD?
That would depend on the commercial square footage that's built in the project without MUPD, but yes.
Okay. All right. And do we know what the total of property tax exempted over the 10-year period?
Yes, but I didn't bring that with me.
Okay. Well, I'm just kind of guessing it's going to be about $1.5 million. Okay, thank you. That's all my questions, and I have a comment. You know, an hour and a half ago, we were talking about Civic Stadium, and all we needed was $100,000 a year to advance a proposal to 4J, which they may or may not have accepted. And several counselors said, oh, my gosh, where are we going to find $100,000? There's no $100,000. That means we would take that away from social services. We wouldn't, you know, like the warming center, and now we know about the great need of Buckley House, you know. There were all the, you know, somehow it was assumed that all the human service needs would suffer if we tried to preserve a historical asset. Well, right here, this year here for this MUPD is $135,000. Now, that could go to social services too and human services. So, I don't know, I see kind of a double standard here, and I will not be supporting this project. And I really am glad that Council Ortiz is going to request a work session to reexamine this whole policy in that part of town. I think it's outliving its usefulness and is no longer necessary, and I think the city really needs the money. You know, if we're going to worry about 100 grand, that we can't preserve a historic asset, here it is right here. I just think it's time to look at the policy again. I look forward to that. Thank you.
Councilor Zelenka. Council Zelenka.
So, for me, this isn't about this particular project. I applaud the LEED certification. I'm concerned about what Mr. Matthews said. And this isn't a referendum on LEED or green buildings, for that matter. It is about the $145,000 a year or $1.5 million over 10 years that would go into our general fund in terms of property taxes had we not had this M U P D exemption. If we harken back to the original reason for M U P D was, especially in the university area, was we were trying to stimulate development in that area because there wasn't happening. Well, recently, in just the last two to three years, we have seen multiple units be developed between 19th and 20th on the south of the university of it, about 500 bedrooms. And then, just recently, over by my house, next to the new Matthew Night Arena and behind the Market of Choice, is two developments, one complete, one under construction, another over 500 units. So, those are outside the M U P D zone and dwarf the number, and got no property tax exemptions. And they dwarf the number of units inside M U P D. So, over 1,000 units without M U P D that's been developed in the last couple of years in the same area, just outside the zone. So, I'm puzzled why all of this development that's going around there, we're around the M U P D zone and we're, is far outstripping inside the M U P D zone, yet we're continuing to give property tax exemptions to incentivize people to build multiple family units inside that area when it's absolutely not, simply not needed. And at least in this area, I agree with Council Ortiz. There are other areas downtown in the Trainsong neighborhood that absolutely this would be a good idea. And I voted for M U P Ds in the downtown area because I believe they're needed. If this project would be developed, maybe not by these guys in this particular circumstance or with this particular configuration without the M U P D, and I firmly believe that. And in the energy business where I come from, we had a thing called the Model Conservation Standards where we pushed the envelope in terms of what we wanted to have occur within the building codes. When we achieved that and got everybody to shift to that and got our expected result, we got rid of the Model Conservation Standard and the incentives that went along with that. We've achieved development in this area to the point where we no longer need M U P D in the university area. And I think it's time for this program in that area to go away.
Before I call on the next person in the queue here, I just want to make the comment that when I was in conversation with Mr. Neal about this project, what he said to me was that they're going to build, they're going to build with or without M U P D, they're going to build. It's a question of what they're going to build. It's a question of the quality of what they're going to build. And so, for us, and I'm glad we're going to have a discussion too, not so much about M U P D, but how do we incentivize the kind of building that we want to have happen as opposed to just any kind of building happening? I have no doubt that Council Zelenka is correct because I drive over in that area and I see the multitude of multi-unit housing being built over there. My only question is, are we trying to create something to get to a higher standard that meets all of our city goals that we've talked about and envision Eugene? And if we're not going to do it this way, how are we going to do it? So, just part of the discussion that I think we have ahead. Okay. So, I'm going to call on Council Polling.
Thank you. Well, this is unlike any other M U P D application that I've seen since coming on the council in 2003 for a number of reasons. One, it's got the underground parking and the commercial retail space on the first floor. Second, it's going to generate more tax revenue at the very start than it currently is generating right now. Normally, what happens is the city continues to collect money on the property, but not the facility, until that 10 years is up. This looks like it's about a $7,300 a year more taxes to start off with once it's completed. And then, on the 11th year, it goes to $165,000 a year taxes increase. So, this is kind of a unique type situation. You look at what's on the property now, and, you know, I don't know if I'd want to live next door to it, the way it's described in the A I S. And the other thing about this that's unique that I haven't seen is that in the future, it will allow for conversion to condominiums. Again, this is something rather unique. And I think overall, you know, it looks like a great project. I like the south-facing courtyard idea. And, you know, we have what we have. We've got rules. We've got a boundary, and that's what they have to go by, that's what we have to go by. And if we don't like the boundary, we don't like the rules, then let's change it. I'm all for having a work session on it. But for the time being, this is what we're working with. This is what the developers are working with. Just because they're following the rules doesn't mean we have to punish them. So, I'm in favor of moving this forward. I think it's a great project. I like the ideas that Mr. Neal has put into this. And like I said, it's a unique M U P D application. I just, I really like it.
Council Taylor.
Thank you. The rules do not say that we have to approve something that gets points, just that we may, if we wish to. If we needed, well, we run the city with taxes. If we want people to build better buildings and give them tax relief, why don't we do it everywhere? It's certainly not needed in this area. And there are people who are having a real struggle to pay their taxes in other parts of the city, who, when they hear about something like this, they say, well, if you give me a tax break, maybe I could remodel my house. As for the neighbors liking this, I visited the next-door neighbors and they are not pleased at all. It's going to cut off their sun, their solar access, and they're going to have balconies looking into the backyard. It is not, when we say the neighbors like it, it's not the neighbors that are directly affected by it. But I do think that everybody, and there should be a real advantage to the city if we give a tax exemption. I'd be willing to do it on Broadway, on Willamette Street, the center part of Willamette Street downtown, but not in this, it's not needed in this neighborhood. And I would hope that they're building a good building because they want it to attract buyers, renters, and because they want to do a good, the right thing for the community. Thank you.
Council Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to ask staff, do we have any M U P Ds waiting in the wings in the university area? Any applications pending?
No, we don't.
Okay. Thank you.
Put a moratorium on it. Council Prey.
Thank you. I really would appreciate having a work session. I applaud Council Ortiz for wanting to have one. If we need to have the conversation again, I think that's a great idea. And also, as she noted, if the current structure and the current expectation is that if you achieve a certain number of points, not that that requires us to vote for it, but it does provide a guideline. That's why it's in place. And I am willing to follow the guideline that's currently in place and support it. But I don't want that to be a guarantee that I will always vote for it. I think a work session is an absolutely great idea. Probably is good to revisit that every once in a while. And I think the discussion right now really points up one of the challenges we have as a body in that in our half-a-billion-dollar budget, every single one of us here thinks that billion or half-a-billion dollars needs to be spent in a little bit different ways. I would spend it this way, and my colleague would spend it that way. And in many cases, they're in perfect alignment, and in other cases, they're not quite. Do I feel like that is a double standard? I work very hard to not try to utilize a double standard, but I do try very hard to try to be thoughtful and deliberate about each thing on its own merits individually. And that creates challenge. I understand that creates challenge, and it will create situations where we will not agree on a dollar, much less a million dollars, but it is how this process works. And when we get to the budget, this conversation will be, once again, that same conversation around human services, around public safety, around transportation. In my time here, I've learned to accept that is how this sausage gets made and that's how this works. But for every 250 people you talk to, they're going to give you 250 different versions of how the money ought to be spent or what is the appropriate use for that money. So, that's why I think having the conversation about how the money should be spent is really where we need to go next, not to try to have it here around this project. So, I think we're all trying to say that, but in this case, I'll support this project, but I don't want that to be a guarantee that we're always going to support them or that their time is still here. Let's have the conversation. I think it's a good idea as we try to work our way through it.
Council Farr.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm a little bit puzzled by some of the arguments that I'm hearing here. You know, the city does run on taxes, but I believe, I heard the comment that this is a net increase in taxes with the build-out of this project. Councilor Polling and the mayor have said some of the things that I would have said. They were going to build it, but how they would build it is of particular importance. And the company has a very good reputation of building. And I'm also interested in weaving this in with what Mr. Matthews said earlier regarding quality of infill, quality of dense development. I believe this goes in that direction. And I'm looking forward, Council Ortiz, for our conversation on M U P D and how that does apply perhaps to the Bethel Triangle and how maybe it can help us get some transportation, Trainsong. I'm dating myself, sorry. And how we can get some adequate transportation in that area. So, thank you.
Council Zelenka.
I agree that the quality of our housing, especially our multifamily housing, is a very important issue. I will point out, however, that the courtside building that just was finished this last year near the Matthew Night Arena is seeking LEED-certified. Outside the M U P D zone and without any subsidies, and, you know, if they could do it, we should investigate how they were able to do it without any subsidies. So, if we're, if I, I'm all in agreement. If we're going to have a LEED-certified incentive program, let's call it that and let's do a LEED-certified incentive program instead of this program. The rules about M U P D do not say that once you put in an application, follow the rules, we'll give you the incentive. It says if it's in the public interest to do so. Long time ago for me, because this subsidy was no longer needed to incentivize people to build in this area, it pleased to be in the public interest for me, and it continues to be. And so, I'm not going to support this proposal. And I believe that we've already got a sufficient amount of votes to schedule a work session. We don't have to send out a poll for a M U P D. Got that, Prey? Good. Tell me he's paying attention.
Council Clark.
Thank you. I'm certainly not a contracting professional, but my understanding is that oftentimes, the taller you build something, the more cost-effective it becomes in the process. So, I was wondering, the building next to Matthew Night, how tall is that? How many floors? Do you happen to know, Mr. Manager?
Four. Five.
Five. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So, I think we're ready to vote on this. Would you please vote? Five in favor and three in opposition, it passes. And with that, we are through with the business up to this evening. Thank you all very much.